Allegiance to our nation's flag. If you can, please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you. So, welcome to the official Yorba Linda City Council Candidates Forum presented by SoCalGas and organized by the Yorba Linda Chamber of Commerce. I'm your moderator tonight, Clarissa Surplus. The goal of the forum is to present the views of the candidates for our Yorba Linda City Council in a fair, nonpartisan setting so that you, the voters, can make an informed decision. The views expressed here will be those of the candidates, not the sponsor or the Yorba Linda Chamber of Commerce. The Yorba Linda Chamber of Commerce takes no stand in support of or in opposition to any of the candidates. All candidates whose names will appear on the ballot have been invited to participate in this forum and have previously agreed to the debate rules tonight. The rules for tonight's debate are as follows. Candidates will have two minutes for opening and closing statements. They will be asked a question and then have one minute to respond, with additional, with an additional 45-second rebuttal at the moderator's discretion if they are mentioned by another candidate. The light in front of me on the lectern will start at green and then switch to yellow to indicate that you have 25 seconds left. When you are out of time, the light will turn red. You will be signaled and your microphone will be turned off. The questions tonight have been determined by the Chamber of Commerce and an online public submission form. The questions have not been disclosed to the candidates. The last rule is for our audience here. Please remain silent until the end of the debate when we can all give democracy a round of applause. And now, by virtue of the registrar's randomized ballot order, the first opening statement will be from Peggy Huang on the left. You may begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Yorba Linda residents. Thank you so much for the honor and privilege to have served you as your city council member for the past eight, eight and a half years. When I first ran for city council, I wanted to make Yorba Linda a beautiful place to live and a vibrant, and a place full of amenities and a vibrant economy for all, as well as making sure that we have a balanced budget and a sustained plan for growth and financial stability. To achieve that, I asked my council to join me in making sure that we have a vision plan for Savai Ranch. At that time, it was an underutilized business area. To ensure that our town center was built, in fact, my first vote on council was to build the parking structure that you see now, as well as the building plan. It has now become the heartbeat of Yorba Linda. And lastly, I built a library that would ensure that our children have a place to learn and be a member of our community. But most importantly, what I'm really glad that I've been able to bring to you is that sustained plan for the future. What we have done here at city council is to ensure that we pay down our debt and we paid our pension and we use our surpluses to pay for unfunded medical liability. All these things together has made Yorba Linda the third safest city in California and one of the top 100 small cities to live in America. I humbly ask for your vote for this November so we can continue to work together to ensure that Yorba Linda continues to be the leader in California. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Johnson?
I first want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this opportunity and I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. My name is Anthony Johnson and I'm a lifelong resident of Yorba Linda and a proud product of the Placentia Yorba Linda School District. Growing up, I was very active at my home parish of St. Martin Emporius Catholic Church. After graduating from Eldorado High School, I went on to work several jobs where I put myself through college by attending Cal State Fullerton and USC. While I was getting my master's at USC, I wanted to start giving back to our community and my service has included being president of the Yorba Linda Chamber of Commerce Foundation, board member for the Yorba Linda Chamber of Commerce, co-chair of Love Yorba Linda, and I'm currently the president-elect of the Yorba Linda Sunrise Rotary Club. Professionally, I have worked in both the public and the private sectors, working in research, analysis, audit services, consulting, and community outreach. With my experience, I know what it takes to run a city government more like a business and I'm dedicated to making my hometown of Yorba Linda an even better place to live. I currently represent you as a traffic commissioner where I have worked hard to improve our roads and made them safer by completing several key capital improvement projects. My priorities, if I get elected to the city council, would be to continue to support our public safety partners, strengthen our city's wildfire evacuation plans, try to continue to improve our roads to reduce traffic congestion, expand our neighborhood watch programs, and enhance our business safety watch programs, simplify the permitting process for Yorba Linda businesses, and to create new programs to help our small businesses grow. I am honored to have received the endorsements of Mayor Pro Tem Beth Haney, as well as council members Peggy Huang and Janice Lim. I've also received the endorsements from Assemblyman Philip Chen, the Orange County Business Council, and former Yorba Linda Ward District President Wayne Miller, as well as several key business leaders and residents from across Yorba Linda. I want to thank everyone again and I'm looking forward to having a robust discussion tonight and I hope to earn your vote.
Thank you. Mayor Campbell?
Hi. My name is Tara Campbell and I'm the mayor of Yorba Linda. I'm a lifelong Yorba Linda resident and it has been an absolute honor to serve you in my hometown over these past years. And together, we have accomplished so much for our city. In my time on council, I've always prioritized public safety, which is why I'm proud to say that in my time on council, we've added multiple deputies to our police services. We've added and enhanced the technology and resources they have to combat crime and prevent crime from happening in our community, which has led Yorba Linda to being the third safest city in California this year. We've invested in infrastructure and new amenities for our community, like the Yorba Linda Town Center, the new award-winning Yorba Linda Public Library and Cultural Arts Center, and added to our quality of life with more and more parks, like Adventure Playground, Checkers Dog Park, and more youth sports fields. We've supported our local small businesses and I've made sure that our city is proactive in not only retaining the businesses that we have, but proactive in recruiting businesses to fill vacancies, to bring down our vacancy rates, and add new shopping and dining options in our community. And we've done all of this while maintaining a balanced budget every year. As your city council member, I will continue to prioritize public safety. I will continue to be a staunch defender of our taxpayers' hard-earned dollars and I will continue to ensure that City Hall is accountable and accessible to you. It has been a privilege to serve you. I'd be honored to have your vote to continue serving you. Thank you for joining us here tonight.
Thank you. Jess Pataglia?
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you to those at home as well, making the time for us this evening. And thank you to the Yorba Linda Chamber of Commerce and to SoCalGas for supporting tonight's event. Again, my name is Jess Pataglia. Yorba Linda is truly a fantastic community. Keeping it that way is one of the main reasons I asked for your vote for city council this evening. I'm a Yorba Linda homeowner and a lifelong resident of this beautiful city. I graduated from Esperanza High School and attended Cal State Fullerton, so I guess you can say I'm a local boy. My wife and I are the proud parents of three young children, all girls, daddies outnumbered at home. I'm a parent leader who's been actively involved in supporting traditional education for our Yorba Linda schools. My commitment, at the end of the day, is to preserve family-friendly qualities that make Yorba Linda such a special place to call home. As your city councilman, I will put residents first by opposing high-density housing projects that would bring more crime and overcrowding to our city. Yorba Lindans, not state politicians, should be making our city's housing and land use decisions. Protecting the safety of Yorba Linda families is my highest priority. On the city council, I will support our deputy sheriffs and strengthen public safety measures to reduce crime and homelessness. I do support Prop 36 to help reform our state's permissive legal system. As a successful local businessman, I will be a strong voice for Yorba Linda taxpayers to oppose higher taxes and stop that wasteful spending. Yorba Linda already pays their fair share. We need citizen representatives, not career politicians, on our city council to represent Yorba Linda and I would absolutely be honored to earn your vote and represent you. Thank you so much again for being tonight, being here tonight.
Thank you. Shivinder Singh?
Thank you. My name is Shivinder Singh. I'm honored to be here today. My wife and I have raised two beautiful children in this exceptional community, our land of gracious living. Professionally, I'm a computer electrical engineer by profession with 25 years of public service leadership experience. I'm also a business owner for the last 24 years, serving as CEO of Eagle USA Mortgage. On a personal note, I've been married to my wife for over 28 years, who is a dentist. Both our kids have graduated from UCLA. My daughter is 24 and son is 21 now. I'm the current chairman of the Yorba Linda Planning Commission for the last four years, a former traffic commissioner, giving me over 11-plus years of commission experience. I have served as HWA president, supported PTAs. I'm a rotarian, active in Chamber of Commerce, Love Yorba Linda Lobster Fest, member of Richard Nixon Library, and an appointed delegate from Congresswoman Young Kim's 40th Congressional District. Now, why am I running? In 2016, I suffered a stroke where I had lost my left side. I couldn't walk or talk. While I was going through speech therapy, physical therapy, I had a massive heart attack. But thanks to baby aspirin, which made me recover when I got to St. Jude Hospital after 45 minutes, but in the process, I lost about 35% of my heart. I survived. During my recovery, this community stepped in, which demonstrated what neighbors are all about, neighbors helping neighbors. COVID hit, I was out for two and a half years. That's when the local community dropped in food, groceries, and meals. Last year, when local leaders asked me to run, I asked my wife. She said, "Absolutely no, you're not running." But eventually, she gave in, when on the weekend, she was all listening about Yorba Linda, the new businesses coming in. She mentioned one thing, "Shivinder, seems like your work has become your passion and if that's the case, if the call of the city is for you to run, I'll be on board, but on one condition, you have to run a positive campaign." And here I am today. I'm not a seasoned politician. This is my first time running for elected office and I'm running as a two-servant leader and humbly asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Shivinder. Okay. So, thank you all for your opening statements. And because Councilmember Huang had the chance for her first opening statement, Anthony Johnson, this first question will be directed to you tonight. The city of Yorba Linda is proud of its strong support for the police department, which has contributed to a decrease in residential burglary. However, there has been an increase in auto theft and commercial burglary. Some residents have suggested providing subsidies to commercial property owners for the installation of Orange County Sheriff Department-approved security cameras, among other ideas. With that in mind, what is your plan for working with the police department to ensure Yorba Linda remains the third safest city in California?
Thank you so much, Clarissa. I appreciate that. So, I have, through my role with the Chamber of Commerce, I've been very active with working with our sheriff's department and trying to make sure that a lot of our businesses are involved in, enrolled in the Business Watch Safety Program. The Business Watch Safety Program really helps hardens businesses and trying to make it less of a temptation for burglars to go in and break it. I definitely want to work with our sheriff's department in making sure that not just businesses, but everyone has the tools and resources that they need to continue to keep their homes and their businesses safe. Our city has done a great job of trying to get flock cameras and the FUSIS system and I definitely think it's our job as the city council to make sure that the residents and business owners and the sheriff's department have access to these tools, whether it's through subsidies or grants.
Thank you. Mayor Campbell?
Well, Clarissa, you said maintain third safest city. I want to be first. I'm going for that top spot, okay? So, what can we do to enhance that? I will say, you heard in my opening statement, I talked about additional technology and resources. We, the city, invested in 36 flock cameras that our police department's now able to use and they're able to use it at a real-time operations center. This is able to not only combat crime that has happened, but prevent crime that is potentially going to occur. That is huge. You brought up commercial burglaries in particular. You probably all remember, a couple months ago, we had Handel's and another couple other restaurants that were burglarized. I personally went out with our chief of police to meet with those businesses and actually all the businesses in each of those shopping centers. We held a Business Watch meeting, kind of like Neighborhood Watch, right? So, we've started a Business Watch program here for the businesses to be looking out for each other, sharing with them the tips and trends and what we're seeing so that we can harden our property and make sure that we prevent crime from happening. So, those are some of the steps that we can continue to take to ensure the safety of our community.
Thank you. Jess Pataglia?
Thank you for the question. When it comes to public safety, if we don't have public safety, we just frankly don't have much and everybody here in this room is dedicated to making this city the safest it can be. And I'm with you, Mayor. I don't think three is, I think three is great, but one is much better. With that said, I have started the conversation with some key leaders in our, in our community, namely, I do have a relationship with the PYLUSD Superintendent, Dr. Churness. He and I are working together to put together a safety committee in the community that involves PYLUSD leadership, like Dr. Churness, police leadership, chief of police, fire chief, and city leaders to put together a safety committee that meets together on a monthly cadence so we can share best practices amongst all of each other. I think if we're all aligned on public safety and we understand what the concerns are from everyone and every angle, that allows us to be the safest city we can possibly be. Thanks.
Thank you. Shivinder?
Thank you. I'm a public safety engineer by profession, a traffic engineer by profession. That's what I do on a daily basis. Three things, collaboration, cooperation, communication. That's the key. Educating our citizens, Neighborhood Watch programs, Business Watch programs. I've been working with a deputy for many months now, enhancing and bolstering our neighborhood and Business Watch programs. That's the key. Going out in the community, talking to people, supporting the new flock cameras, creating safe, more safe exchange zones, and neighbors, again, taking care of neighbors. That's what we're all about, land of gracious living. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang?
Yes. Well, I have been a career prosecutor and been a career prosecutor at federal, state, and local level for 20-plus years and have worked with local law enforcement, as well as the state law enforcement. And I've been able to take that experience here to Yorba Linda. When we became, at the time, when we became part of the OCSD, if many of you remember, we went through months of burglaries that were just unimaginable. I started the first Neighborhood Watch here in Yorba Linda that was held citywide and began that walk and I will continue to help neighborhoods start up Neighborhood Watches. But the important key to buying a lot of the technology that we need for law enforcement is through grants. Orange County Sheriff's Department has received over $3 million for that grant. If elected, being able to continue to serve as your council member, I will continue to work with the OCSD to ensure that they get the applications done and get the money for our city.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang? We're moving on to our next question and we'll start with Mayor Campbell. The city of Yorba Linda holds a solid reputation of remaining fiscally responsible and maintaining a strong budget reserves, even during economic challenging times. Heading into the next two-year budget review, what would be some of your strategic goals and policy direction? Is there anything in the current budget that you believe needs to be revisited or addressed?
Yeah, we always have been incredibly fiscally responsible and that's going to be even critical going into this next term as you're seeing the cost of living, everything is going up. So, us being fiscally prudent is going to be incredibly prudent and important. We have always had over 50% in reserves, healthy reserves, so that we can plan for anything. Like when the pandemic happened, we cut, we still had a balanced budget during that. Property taxes going up, you made a good investment by buying here in Yorba Linda, so that revenue's going up. We also need to, we really only have two sources of revenue, property tax and sales tax. And so, a big push for me, especially going into this next term, is going to be economic development. I've made sure that our city is now proactive. We brought on a broker to bring in new businesses to fill vacancies, but also it's going to be critical to double down on those so that we can fill those vacancies, make sure we have revenue coming in to be able to pay for all the great things that we want to do, police, parks, roads. We need the revenue to be able to do all the great things to maintain our quality of life here.
Thank you. Jess Pataglia?
All right. So, when it comes to the city's budget, I'm a huge proponent of fiscal conservatism. At work, professionally, I do run a nine-figure budget for a food manufacturing company and I'm going to bring that same fiscal conservatism into city, to city council. With that said, we've had a track record of a balanced budget. That's important and maintaining that balanced budget means for sustainable growth across the city. As you've heard, we have healthy reserves and when it comes to taxes, you know, like it was said, property taxes and sales tax are a good source of revenue. So, little things, and I've mentioned this before and it gets a little chuckle typically, but hey, if you're going to go shopping, go to the Target off Yorba Linda Boulevard, all right? Don't go up to that Anaheim Hills Target. That's how we get those revenues, all right? Share it with the family. But at the end of the day, you get what you put in and absolutely dedicated to continuing to balance the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Shivinder Singh?
I'm a business owner for the last 25 years. That's all I do, a mortgage broker, finance, budget. I know what it takes to retain employees. I know what it takes to retain and recruit new businesses. We survived the 2009 meltdown. We survived the 2019 COVID. We have a healthy budget. It's always balanced. We need to keep working on getting new businesses. We are only one of the two cities which have a commercial broker, JNL, which goes out and actively recruits businesses even before our businesses leave the city. So, I will definitely support that, as well as, again, bring safety in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang?
Yes. Well, when I was appointed to serve on council in February, the first meeting I attended, I was shocked to see that we had a decline in sales tax for the third quarter and that really alarmed me. And I suggested, and I was glad my council agreed with me, that we needed to revisit how we can expand our sales tax. And we worked with the Chamber of Commerce, as well as our retail consultant, to continue to look at how we can attract businesses, but most importantly, ensure that we promote and as well as assist our local businesses in their expansion program and helping those who are struggling find out what is leaking. But most importantly, as we move forward, as part of the question you asked, is we need to look at our contract. This is a contract city and a lot of our contracts are signed for three, five, and even our trash contract is 20 years. Those need to be visited, they need to be checked, and ensure that we are getting the services that we are paying for, or we need to renegotiate the cost.
Thank you. Anthony Johnson?
Thank you. Like it was mentioned, we have a very healthy reserve and a very healthy budget, but like Councilwoman Huang says, we are seeing a decrease in sales tax revenue. We've already saw a decrease of $600,000, on track of losing $1 million in sales tax revenue. And because of that, we need to do what we can to support our businesses. While with the Chamber of Commerce, I have gone to DC and Sacramento and advocated for tools and resources for our businesses, brought them back here and now our businesses are thriving because of what I did with the Chamber of Commerce. We need to continue doing that. With the Chamber of Commerce, we are currently building a program called CEO that will help our businesses with some of the skills that they need to succeed. It is a priority for us that we need to make sure that all of our businesses have the tools and resources they need and while we continue to support them so we can increase our sales tax revenue to continue to have a very healthy and balanced budget. Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to our next question and we will begin with Jess Pataglia. So, many of the candidates on this stage tonight are endorsed by a variety of different people and political organizations. Local politics are typically nonpartisan. So, in your view, do these endorsements carry a big weight in this election? And as candidate, will you align with specific organizations and parties, or will your primary focus be on serving the residents of Yorba Linda?
Thank you for the question. And it is a very important question. You're right, all the candidates up here have been endorsed by, you know, at least one political group. I can tell you that while I am certainly humbled and honored to receive the endorsement of local political groups, two of them of note, what I can tell you is that I am absolutely dedicated to serving the city that I call home. I'm a public servant by nature and not being a career politician, my ambitions are 100% localized. I can say with utmost confidence that in a perfect world, I'd love to serve on the city council and term out and put in a good 12 years locally and that's where my politics stop, is in the city of Yorba Linda. The future is our children and I want to make this place an even better place than it is for our children and our community in general. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Shivinder Singh?
Like I mentioned, I'm not a seasoned politician. First time running for elected office, this city gave me a second life and just want to be a servant leader and give back to the community. No career ambitions. I have a full-time job, I have a full-time business. Primary goal is to serve our residents. Keep Yorba Linda, Yorba Linda. That's my slogan, which means we breathe the same air, we live in the same city, our kids go to the same school, we share everything. We need to be unified. It's high time we need to get united to keep Yorba Linda, Yorba Linda. Preserve the exceptional quality of life we have here. Why did we move here? Because of large parks, because of large house lots and great schools. Kids first, residents first, no partisan politics. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang?
Well, first, I am humbled and I really appreciate all the hundreds of residents who have endorsed me personally. Those residents' endorsements are the most important to me because those are the people I serve and that knowing that I have their endorsement means that I am doing what I'm supposed to do and that is working for them. But also having the endorsement of some of the local leaders in our county is important because so many of our issues are regional, as well as statewide. Having their endorsement means that I have a working relationship with them so that I can work with them to advocate for our interests, both here at the local level, as well as the region and the greater state and federal level. But most importantly, thank you to all the residents who have emailed me and signed up on my website to endorse me. I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anthony Johnson?
Thank you. I have been very humbled and blessed to receive the endorsements of a lot of local business leaders and residents from all over Yorba Linda and all over northern Orange County. My priority has always been to the residents of Yorba Linda, regardless of party affiliation. This is my hometown, this is our community and we all need to work together to continue making it a great place to live and to do business and to raise our kids. And that will be my main focus, is to work for you, the voters and the residents of Yorba Linda. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Campbell?
Yes, while I have a broad coalition of supporters, the endorsements that matter most to me are those from Yorba Linda residents. Those who are willing to stick a yard sign in their yard, the families who know the track record of results that I have delivered for the city, that are willing to vouch for me, the people that have helped over the years. That's what matters most to me and really gets to my heart. I've never forgotten who I work for. At the top of this city organizational chart are the residents of Yorba Linda, voters. I work for you. It has been so humbling to have the support of so many residents across this city.
Thank you. Shivinder Singh, this next question is to you. The regional housing needs allocation, otherwise known as RENA, for Yorba Linda is 2,415 units for the sixth cycle. To date, the city's response to this housing element requirement has still not been approved and now there are two different housing measures on local ballots. What does your idea of compliance look like and can you firmly state your position with a yes or no on measures JJ and KK?
Thank you. I've been the chair of the Planning Commission for the last four years. This is what I've done in the last four years. We listen to the residents. We have something called Measure B, which, if there's any major change in zoning, comes back to the voters. 2,415 homes, Measure JJ. Basically, we need to preserve and say yes on JJ, jewels and jewelry. Yorba Linda's a jewel, J for jewels and jewelry, we need to preserve JJ and no on KK, kaka. So, now, what is Measure JJ? We need to keep local control, otherwise we'll be subject to builder's remedy. KK brings in a lot of housing without SEQA, without traffic analysis, on the Bryant Ranch Center, up to four stories, 60 feet, which will bring a lot of traffic on the east side. That's a fire hazard zone, one way in and out, so absolutely no on KK. JJ, thank you. Yes on JJ.
Thank you, Shivinder. Councilmember Huang?
Well, for the past seven years, I've been a fierce advocate for this city, as well as for all cities, for local control. I've been battling Sacramento nonstop and I proudly wear the badge of having been personally attacked by Scott Wiener on every single housing bill. But what I've been able to do to the best of my ability was to protect our city. Based on my knowledge of how RENA law worked, I advocated for our city so that we had over 400 units counted for accessory dwelling units. That helped bring down a lot of the density that That helped bring down a lot of the density that's needed in a lot of those parcels. Otherwise, we'd be looking at fully 2,400 high-density parcels. Moving forward, it is so important for our city to pass JJ because without it, we would be losing all our planning abilities, and we would be subjected to Sacramento and San Francisco buildings.
Thank you. Anthony Johnson.
Thank you. Like it was mentioned earlier, there are a lot of ramifications when it comes to measures JJ and KK. It is really important for us to maintain that local control and to try to avoid builder's remedy as much as possible. And with maintaining local control, all the different housing projects that are on Measure JJ will have to follow the city's codes and the city's rules and regulations, as well as having to do a CEQA analysis as well as a traffic impact analysis. With being on the Traffic Commission, we did a very high-level traffic impact analysis to see how all the different projects will happen on the city. But with the individual projects, we will be able to work individually and see how each individual project will have an impact, and then we can determine whether that is the best project for our city or not. And so it's really important to vote yes on Measure JJ and no on Measure KK. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Campbell.
I trust our Yorba Linda residents. I do not trust Sacramento. I'm a big believer in local control. We, the residents of Yorba Linda, know what's best for our community. And we've proven at City Hall, we will involve our residents in the decision-making process at City Hall. That's what we have before us in JJ. We worked with our residents, east, central, west, to devise the best plan for our community moving forward, and that's what you have before you in Measure JJ. What I fear for our community is something like Measure KK or builder's remedy, where a developer can come in and disregard what the residents want, disregard our local laws and zoning and height restrictions. That's what I'm trying to preserve local control because we should be able to make the decisions for our community. So yes on JJ, no on KK.
Thank you. Jaspa Taglia.
No curveballs over here. You know, you're going to see some consistency in my response, but what I'll tell you is that spending a lot of time visiting residents, not only on the east end but around Yorba Linda over these past few months, it's been very, very apparent that most everyone, I think everyone but one, was all in on local control, which means a hard yes on JJ. I firmly believe that, you know, at the end of the day, this is a nonpartisan decision. I had not met one individual that was hard-pressed to say, I want the state making the decision on Yorba Linda's behalf. And that doesn't matter who's at the state level, right, or who happens to be the governor. Localized control is what this city wants, and they've made it very apparent. So a very hard yes on JJ. Yorba Linda needs to make Yorba Linda decisions, and when it comes to no on KK, it's hard to beat kaka, so I'm not going to go there. But what I will say is that public safety is paramount, so a hard no on KK. I had two good friends lose their homes in 2008, and I've heard plenty of stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Moving on to our next question, and we'll begin now with Councilmember Huang for this one. A few weeks ago, the city of Yorba Linda City Council passed a resolution in support of Proposition 36, which would change the previous Proposition 47 by reclassifying some misdemeanor theft and drug crimes as felonies. The Yorba Linda Chamber of Commerce has also endorsed Proposition 36. Does your position align with the city council resolution in support of Prop 36, and what is your plan to address retail theft and confront the fentanyl crisis?
Thank you for that question. As I mentioned, I'm a prosecutor by training, and I'm very proud to be a member of Calhaven, a group of local elected officials in support of Proposition 36. One of the most important charging tools I had was Penal Code 666, which means that if you're a repeated petty theft, I can charge as a felony. Under Proposition 47, I couldn't do that. And that is why we keep seeing these individuals on our street. They're not behind bars because they're being cited or given misdemeanors in less than 12 months, oftentimes only serving days in jail. By having that capability, again, to charge them for felony as a repeat petty theft offender, we can put them behind bars and start working on smart, proportional rehabilitative services for those who are mentally ill and those who need a drug rehabilitation, as well as working with our businesses and fighting back retail crimes.
Thank you. Anthony Johnson.
Thank you. So I was very active when Proposition 36 first came out and trying to collect signatures. I went out with our district attorney, Todd Spitzer, and spent almost a full day trying to collect signatures to make sure that Proposition 36 got on our ballot. And I'm proud to be a part of that effort, and it is officially now on our ballots. It is very important that Proposition 36 does pass. Our small businesses are hurting because people think that they can go in and steal up to $900 worth of stuff, and that's just simply not right. Or, you know, they just, you know, they get arrested, then they just get released. You know, that is not right. We have to keep them in jail for any kind of crimes or thefts that are being committed. When it comes to trying to reduce retail theft in our city, we have to work with our small businesses, we have to work with our first responders, and try to make sure that they have all the tools and resources they need. We mentioned earlier the flock cameras and the fusil system. We need to be able to make sure that our small businesses have those to try to remain safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Campbell.
Yeah, I strongly support Prop 36. It is greatly needed. And when I talk about public safety still being a top priority for me, it's because Sacramento continues to decriminalize things and really deprioritize public safety. So we need to be more vigilant than ever to maintain the safety of our community. You bring up retail theft again, I talked about it a little bit earlier. But another thing that I made sure we did is we reached out to every property owner of a shopping center in town, advocating for them and connecting them with the tools and resources to maybe they add cameras to enhance the ability for us to prevent these crimes from happening. I'm proud to say that in some of the recent commercial burglaries, our police services have done a great job. We have suspects in them, and 11 of them. So we will catch them. Do not come to Yorba Linda to commit crime. Please support Prop 36 so that we can combat and enhance and strengthen public safety in the state of California.
Thank you. Jaspa Taglia.
Thank you for the question. Like the rest of the deus thus far, I highly support Proposition 36. It's all about reforming our state's permissive legal system, and permissive is the key word there. Criminals should not feel incentivized to steal a certain amount of product or goods out there. And right now, that's frankly what's happening. If they're not, if they're getting a simple slap on the wrist, it's just not enough, and these career criminals need to be held accountable. If accountability happens, you're going to see it drop dramatically as it relates to theft and thievery and the like. And frankly, you know, it's time to get these career criminals off the streets and back in prison where they belong. If there's punishment, this is exactly what helps us maintain a very safe city. And again, if we don't have public safety in the city, we don't have much. Thank you.
Thank you. Shivender Singh.
Yorba Linda thrives on small businesses and businesses. Our two revenue of sources is property tax and business. We have to be business-friendly. We have to support local businesses, which means we need to undo Prop 47 and yes on Prop 36, which will put criminals behind the bar. There is no excuse for smash-and-grab opportunities for these people to destroy those businesses who work day and night, mom-and-pop shops. Like I said, I'm a business owner for last 25 years, pro-business, pro-support. For fentanyl, we need to have education forums with the kids, with the schools, and the parents. And retail theft, again, cameras. One important thing we keep in mind is we need to make sure businesses have proper cameras registered with their security services as well as pointing in the right direction. A lot of things have happened when police shows up there, we can't see the pictures in the cameras. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. We'll now be moving on to our next question, and we'll begin with Anthony. So Yorba Linda is home to many nonprofits and service organizations like Sunrise Rotary. How would you collaborate with service organizations to enhance their impact on community issues? And can you share an example from your past experience that demonstrates how this approach has been successful?
Yes, thank you. This is a pretty easy question for me. Being co-chair of Love Yorba Linda, president-elect of the Yorba Linda Sunrise Rotary Club, I have been very involved with a lot of Yorba Linda nonprofits for many years now. Just this past Rotary year, we raised over $100,000 in where we're giving back to a lot of local nonprofits to help them be able to accomplish their mission. My goal will be just to continue doing that, continue doing the work that I'm already doing in partnering with Love Yorba Linda, with the Rotary, with the Art Alliance Foundation, the Historical Society, and so many more nonprofits here in Yorba Linda. It's our nonprofits and our businesses that help our community be so beautiful and so vibrant as it is. So that is what I would like to do if I continue to be elected to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Campbell.
We are a philanthropic community. We are a community that gives back in large part. Yes, it's something that was instilled in me from an early age, whether it was Girl Scouts or National Charity League, and to this day, I still deliver Meals on Wheels with Meals on Wheels. And for me, it's important that others had the opportunity to give back. Yes, I'm a member of the Yorba Linda Women's Club and the Yorba Linda Sunrise Rotary Club. But five years ago, when I was mayor, the first time in 2019, I brought Love Yorba Linda to our community. It's Citywide Service Day, and where we complete service projects across the city. That first year, we had nearly 400 volunteers that completed 13 projects. This was our fifth year. We completed over 40 projects with over 1,000 volunteers. This is a philanthropic community. It's us as a community working together that's going to improve our city, and it's been a large part of my life, and I know a large part of what has made Yorba Linda the gem of a city that it is today.
Thank you. Jaspa Taglia.
Philanthropy is the name of the game, and what I could tell you is that one of the few things that I'm the most proud of as it relates to philanthropy is the Love Yorba Linda event that's been mentioned. I have been a proud sponsor of the event the last two years and project manager, and both of those years, I was able to donate food, being in the food manufacturing industry, and put some smiles on faces with snacks. And I led a campus beautification project at Travis Ranch both years, and I'll tell you, there's nothing that brings folks together than getting groups together of children, of parents, and making the school look pretty. It's awesome. We did teacher appreciation, we wrote notes, but it was so much fun, and it's all about giving back, and that is absolutely what Yorba Linda is all about. I think we are absolutely best in class, and we set the standard in giving back to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Shivender Singh.
Lead by example. Our community, again, is, cannot agree better, is philanthropic. We want to give back to the community. This is what brings the community together. I'm an active member of Sunrise Rotary, have actively served in the Lobster Fresh. We raised a lot of money. Have been a member of various organizations, nonprofit. We've done a lot of food pantries during the COVID time at different places in Santa Ana, and it's not just in Yorba Linda. We have, you know, I've been involved with a lot of food pantries, with a lot of, helping people, less privileged people than what we are, we got the privilege. So always want to serve the underserved, trying to help the community getting together as part of the, again, giving back to the society. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang.
Well, Yorba Linda is an incredibly cohesive community that's a part of a very big city, and we're always standing out to help one another, whether it's a neighbor who showed up to help Shivender, or during COVID time when we help each other out individually. I've been very honored to have been part of Yorba Linda Women's Club and performing various service communities, projects. But one of the things that I've always consistently done is just through community service through my church, whether it is to start the program for filling backpacks for children, underprivileged children, so ensure that they have school supplies when they start their school, or filling a shoebox for Christmas items so that they have a little bit of a Christmas present. Those are the things that I think a lot of times we don't see here in Yorba Linda. We don't see that we do have children who do need something underneath their Christmas trees, or they need a backpack. And that's where I've been spending all my time and reaching out to my neighbors to help me fill those backpacks and shoeboxes.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to move on to the next topic of wildfires. We're going to start with Mayor Campbell for this one. So as you know, the city of Yorba Linda has seen major wildfire within or near its borders every decade since its incorporation. We've seen fires which have burned nearly 14,000 acres, resulting in evacuations of up to 10,000 people in the city. So what do you believe the city should do or do and continue to do to help mitigate wildfire risk and ensure emergency response protocols are in place and implemented in the event of a wildfire?
Yeah, first and foremost, making sure our firefighters have all the tools and resources and the latest and greatest technology to be able to combat and fight fires. Proud to say that we have a new truck at Station 32 that has faster, more efficient capabilities, so that's really great news, making sure our firefighters have the tools that they need. Second off, proactive efforts on weed abatement and mitigating any fuel. I will say, those proactive efforts, I was instrumental in pushing to get the goats here, and we got a grant, so we were fiscally responsible on top of getting the goats here. Proactive ways for us to mitigate any fuel to prevent wildfires are critical. And then working with our partners, thanks to the Yorba Linda Water District, we have two heli hydrants that border Yorba Linda that were helpful in fighting the Blue Ridge Fire, which was our most recent one in 2020. So it's incredibly critical. Look, I've a lifelong resident. I remember 2008, so we need to make sure that our fire evacuations are on par. We have the Know Your Way campaign, and now we have the technology for real-time being able to show people where the evacuation routes are. So anyway, some of the things on fire safety. Thank you, Clarissa.
Thank you. Jaspa Taglia.
Yes, fantastic question. These are all great questions. What I would tell you regarding fire safety, as I mentioned it before, I had two very close friends lose everything in the 2008 fires, one of which had just gotten married, and his wife lost her wedding dress and everything in the home. So it hits really close to home for a lot of us out there. I was just talking to a gentleman earlier this evening who had a tough experience in 2008. So when it comes to education, you know, educating families, children, and parents, very, very important that, you know, everybody's up to speed on fire education. Equipping our firefighters is absolutely paramount, and first responders to make sure they're able to take care of our community on a whim, and we are so blessed to have what we have now. So keep that going, and it's all about togetherness and working together as a community. Knowledge is power. So at the end of the day, that's how we remain equipped. Thank you.
Thank you. Shivender Singh.
Thank you. Again, we need to be proactive. Education, communication, collaboration. Why, at the first place, why did the fires begin? What can we do to prevent the fires at home? At places where are there weeds, are there brushes? What can we do on a constant basis? There's something called My Civic 311, web portal. Again, educating the citizens. All you have to do is call 311 or go on the website, and if you see a brush which needs to be cleared up, please let the city know. Tools, technology. We need to have great partnership with OCFA, which we have, great partnership with the water board with the two helipads, which we have. So keep continuing the great partnerships, and again, education, education, and neighbors, talking to neighbors, and avoiding rather than coming across and dealing with the fires. What can we do to avoid? Get to the source of the issue and try to avoid. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang.
As already mentioned, our city is very blessed to be, to have a great partnership with OCFA as well as the Yorba Linda Water District to ensure that we're a safe city. But most importantly, I've been fighting Sacramento for the past three years on these onerous bills that would allow construction in these wildfire corridors, and that needs to stop. And that's been my focus and my energy to make Sacramento listen, that every time they pass a bill like that, or they think about passing a bill like that, it's putting our residents, Yorba Lindans, in danger. And I will continue to work hard to protect our city and stop Sacramento from telling developers it's okay to put all of us at risk. The other thing that, you know, that have not been mentioned is our wonderful CERT program. We have, we can, and I invite all of you to participate in this program so that our public safety officials, our sheriff and our OCFA can concentrate on firefighting, and the CERT volunteers can help with the evacuation.
Thank you. Anthony Johnson.
As a resident that lives out on the east end over in Box Canyon, I, my home backs up to the state park, so my home is always in immediate threat. I remember the 2008 fire, the 2020 fire, and the devastation that it had in our community. Thankfully, our city and our partners have done a great job of giving us the tools and resources we need. We have a new fire truck, like the mayor says. The OCFA has some new helicopters to help with combating the fires. The law district has some heli hydrants. All these are great tools and resources for us. And then we have a great evacuation.
are great tools and resources for us. And then we have a great evacuation plan. I actually helped strengthen our evacuation plans and suggested that the city purchase several different signs so that we could put up to help residents get out and show them exactly what are the evacuation routes. But like what Councilmember Wong says, there are some bills that are coming down that are taking away local control. One bill is, has to do with the fire zone areas. And they want to take away that from us, from the city, and have Sacramento determine what areas are considered a high fire severity area. I will continue to advocate to make sure that they don't take away any more local control from us.
Thank you. Okay, Jess Pataglia, you get the last question of the evening, so we'll kick it off with you here. Now, some residents have claimed that Bassett Chery and other major streets in Yorba Linda have become dangerous speeding areas. This has been mentioned many times on social media, where our citizens are very concerned about this. How do you plan to address this?
This, this one really hits home for me. In 1994, my father, who's here tonight, supporting the cause, nearly lost his life when a drunk individual hit him head-on on the freeway, speeding on the freeway, as a matter of fact. I'm so glad he's here tonight. So when it comes to speeding, I have very much a soft spot for it. So it's all about partnering with police services and educating the community. We do have young drivers constantly flowing through our, our city. So it's a matter of educating youth. I honestly think that's where it, where it starts. But, you know, parents absolutely need to step up and be responsible, make sure that they're educating their, their children who are driving out on the roads. That is absolutely paramount. It's not just children that are being careless. I've seen parents. I've seen parents with young children in the front seats. I've had conversation around, I live right next to Travis Ranch, right next to a school, and I've had numerous conversations with parents about safety first. Thanks.
Thank you. Shivinder Singh.
Enforcement, working with the local sheriffs. Number one, no, no leniency in giving tickets out. I've been working for the last few months with our new deputy. She's foot on the ground. I've driven on Bassett Chery. I have met a lot of residents on Bassett Chery. They've complained about the speeding up. And with all cooperation of the sheriffs, they have increased, they did increase their presence. And when I went back, and again, giving a feedback, we get monthly reports at the city council meetings from the sheriff. Getting a response back also is important. So our sheriffs out there, people still feel that they're not there, but informing back that, hey, so many tickets were given, so many people were driven, given speeding tickets, that's important. So again, enforcement, enforcement, working with the local sheriffs, trying to work with the deputies to get no speeding. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong.
I would agree with Shivinder. Enforcement is very important. And we have been working with the sheriff's department to ensure that enforcement is where it's needed. We have added, in the past few years, we have added an additional motorcycle cop. And that's what his purpose was, is to go out there and for enforcement. And we will continue to find grants in order to pay for those additional services. You know, one of the hardest things for anyone sitting in this chair as a city council member is how to deliver this type of service to you at the same time looking out for your dollars. And we have been looking at various grants, especially from the state of California, to look at ways of getting money to ensure that we can continue to pay for these additional officers. And that's been my number one focus, is to find grant money to pay for more officers, and so that we can leave our general fund to pay for the amenities and other great things that the city can provide for you.
Thank you. And Anthony Johnson.
Thank you. When it comes to traffic, my fellow traffic commissioner and I have been really trying to focus on trying to combat this issue, because it is a serious issue. We've had a lot of speed-related DUI deaths in our city, unfortunately. When it comes to traffic, there are three things, there are, it's called the three Es: education, enforcement, and engineering. And that's what we need to do in order to try to combat all the speeding concerns. With that, I have been working hard on completing some capital improvement projects to try to focus on engineering-wise, how to reduce traffic. Enforcement, the sheriff's department. We currently have two motorcycle officers that are helping with trying to, with trying to control speeding. When we had Brea PD, we had seven motorcycle officers. And our sheriff's department, when I've talked to our captain, we need more motorcycle officers to try to help combat all the speeding that's occurring in the city. So I would like to do is try to find more grants, so that we have more motorcycle officers out on our streets, trying to control the speeding that we have going on. And then lastly, education. We need to be working with, with our schools, with our parents, and our sheriff's deputy, and making sure that the kids and the parents know that they cannot be speeding on our streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Campbell.
Yeah, obviously, a big part of it is enforcement. And that's making sure, again, our police have the resources they need to be able to help with enforcing our speed limits. I recently went on a ride-along with our police department, because I want to see firsthand, what are the trends in Yorba Linda. And I got to see the incredible work that our deputies are doing. And sometimes you need to adjust based off trends that are happening in the community. Couple years ago, we saw a trend, we had a couple fatalities, and it was related to DUIs. And so we worked with our police department. We had somebody now dedicated solely to DUIs at that time. And he's done incredible job. He was our deputy, Deputy Castro, he was our deputy of the year this year. And I actually got to see him in action. So it's adjusting to what we're seeing as the trends in our community. And maybe it is more motors or certain areas of town. Never hesitate to reach out to me if you're saying, hey, Tara, there's this area that we're seeing a little bit too much speeding. Getting a motor out there, helpful enforcement, that's going to be key for this issue.
Great. Thank you. So as we approach the end of tonight's forum, it's now time for our closing statements. And again, by virtue of our rotating and randomized ballot order, the first closing statement will be from Shivinder Singh tonight.
Thank you, Chamber of Commerce and Southern California Gas Company for organizing. And thank you for everyone who is here and who is listening online. I truly believe I represent a typical Yorba Linda family. I'm a business owner, homeowner, father of two, and a husband. Like many of you, I'm committed to preserving our exceptional quality of life. But my commitment is not just a lip service. I have taken reelections. I voted to remove the Grandview Community Sites in Ohio, as I believe that high density does not belong next to single-family residences. I also voted against Bed Care Facilities on El Cajon, as your chair of the planning commission, as I value residents' right to enjoy quiet living. I am the only candidate with experience on traffic and planning commission. I am foot on ground. I visit people's homes, shake hands, because I strongly believe that shaking hands, looking eye to eye develops accountability, faith in the local government. I'm pro-business and fiscally conservative. I've run my own company for the last 23 years. We survived the 2009 meltdown. I know what it takes to retain employees and businesses. Government runs best when people are engaged. That's why I've done over 40-plus meet and greet events, sing with coffee. I'm proud to be a grassroots candidate, walking door-to-door for months, listening to your concerns. My priorities are clear: wildfire prevention, traffic mitigation, attracting new businesses, and enhancing services for children, disabled, and the seniors. I have worked with the police captain to further enhance our neighborhood and business watch programs, as public safety is number one. I am honored to have 60-plus endorsements, including from former Yorba Linda mayors, Jean Hernandez, Tom Lindsay, Alan Castellano, and James Winder. I have managed teams, executed plans, worked with Sacramento to secure grants, and collaborated with stakeholders to create opportunities for your community. When you vote for me, you're voting for a leader who will fight to ensure that decisions are made by the people who live here. Please remember, I humbly ask for your vote. Vote for Singh, like singer song. Let's together sing a song to keep Yorba Linda, Yorba Linda. And please vote for Singh. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong.
Well, thank you to everyone who's here for coming to, to listen to all of us, as well as those who are joining us online. As well, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and this gas company for co-hosting and sponsoring this program. Thank you to all of you. I am so humbled and grateful for your trust in working as your city council member for the past few years. I humbly ask for your vote this November to continue to serve you, because it's a very important issue is right around the corner. And that is the seventh cycle of the RENA housing element, just around the corner in 2029. The planning begins now, actually, five years ahead of the cycle. And with all the knowledge that I have gained in the last seven years, specifically on local control, local planning, I bring value to the city to ensure that we will be able to fight Sacramento on their mandates, as well as putting things in place, so that our housing element not only complies with the law, but it's truly one that the community has a voice in it and shape it, and, and have a way of protecting how Yorba Linda should be. Another thing that is important to the city is public safety. We will continue to work with our Orange County Sheriff's Department, our OCFA, to ensure that we're not only safe, but, but also that we're protected from wildfire. But another issue that's dear to my heart is making sure that the city continues to pay for a crossing guard. Believe it or not, we pay for the crossing guard and not the school district. And that is an issue that is important to me, because our children's safety is important. And that is something I will continue to work on, to ensure that our budget meets that. And lastly, is to ensure that we have a budget that's not only balanced, but it's one that is transparent, that you know where every single dollar goes, because it's your money. I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Johnson.
I love my hometown of Yorba Linda. It's why I've spent so many years serving our community, and why I want to continue working to make it even a better place to live. As traffic commissioner, I have worked to improve our roads and made them safer by installing no right turn LED signs, widening Bassett Chery Road, and doing the La Palma feasibility study to reduce traffic congestion on La Palma and Gifford Canyon. Through my roles with the Chamber of Commerce, Love Yorba Linda, and Rotary, I have advocated for our businesses, created programs like the Future CEO Program, which helps teach kids how to start their own business, help beautify our city, and help raise thousands of dollars to give back to our local nonprofits. Professionally, I have worked in both the public and the private sectors, where I know how to work with governments, and I can bring tools from the business resources to our city government. If elected to the city council, my priorities will be to continue to support our public safety partners, making sure that they have the tools and resources that they need to continue to protect us. I will continue to strengthen our city's evacuation plans, and try to make sure that all of our residents are safe, they safely get out of our city when a major wildfire threatens our city. I will continue to try to improve our roads to reduce our traffic congestion, especially with La Palma and Gifford Canyon. I will work hard to expand our neighborhood watch programs and our, enhance our business safety programs by working with our residents, our businesses, and our sheriff's deputies. I will also simplify the business permitting process, because it needs to be more simple, and, and, it needs to be more simple and more easily accessible for our small businesses. And lastly, I'll be working with the Chamber of Commerce to make sure that we create new programs to help support our small businesses, and make sure we have an environment that is conducive of economic growth. I'm humble, I'm thankful that I've been endorsed by the majority of the city council, as well as the Orange County Business Council, and many business leaders and residents across Yorba Linda. I want to thank you all again for coming tonight. Thank the Yorba Linda Chamber of Commerce and SoCal Gas. And I, my name is Anthony Johnson. I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor Campbell.
Yorba Linda is a great city, and something special continues to take place here. This is a community that we all love. And it's that quality of life that makes us so unique and so amazing. That's what I want to preserve for years and years to come. And we've made great strides to preserve that and enhance that with some great amenities. We've added to our police deputies. We've added deputies. We've added resources. We are the third safest city in California this year. I still want that top spot, Clarissa, don't forget that. We've added world-class, state-of-the-art facilities to our community, the Town Center, the Yorba Linda Public Library and Cultural Arts Center, Adventure Playground, the envy of every other city in Orange County. We've added these state-of-the-art facilities to our community. We've supported our small businesses while also bringing in new shopping and dining options. And we've proven our fiscal responsibility by making sure that we have a balanced budget every year. I have a proven track record of results for our community. I have the knowledge, I have the passion, and I have the experience to continue delivering results for you. I am confident that together, we can ensure a bright future for the city that we love, and the city that we're proud to call home. It has been a privilege to serve you. I'd be honored to have your vote to continue serving you. And so I humbly ask that you vote for Tara Campbell for Yorba Linda City Council. Thank you all for taking the time to be here tonight.
Thank you. And we'll close with Jess Pataglia.
All right. Well, I thank you again to the Yorba Linda Chamber of Commerce, to SoCal Gas for helping us put this event together, and to everybody here tonight and at home, thank you for being here. It is absolutely paramount that city council representatives continue to listen to residents first and make the best decisions on behalf of this amazing community. This is why it's absolutely crucial to be an active listener. If you're going to be on council, you've got to listen to the community and be a strong voice on behalf of Yorba Linda. I am a citizen representative first, and I will put residents first, exercising accountability and responsiveness to the community. I am absolutely dedicated to preserving Yorba Linda's family-friendly values. Preserving these values essentially means fighting back against these housing dictates that we're hearing about from state politicians and bureaucrats. It means opposing high-density developments that disrupt the peace and safety of our community. It means supporting strong law enforcement measures to safeguard our families and businesses. And frankly, it means standing up for parental rights in our schools. Being the proud father of three elementary school students absolutely motivates me to look out for the best quality education for children and their families within our community. Of our three daughters, my, our youngest daughter, Violet, is special needs. She attends Fairmont Elementary School and has all of her needs met in a special day class. We are utilizing resources as parents that we never thought we would need. We are so indebted. I am indebted to this community, and the very least I can do is give back every last bit of time I have to this amazing community in the form of serving you on city council. It also means insisting on the highest level of integrity and fiscal responsibility with our tax dollars. So essentially, I would absolutely love tonight to ask you for, you know, you to elect a hometown city councilman whose only mission is protecting what's amazing about Yorba Linda. Say yes for Jess. Thank you so much, and have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you all for your closing statements. And this concludes tonight's forum. And on behalf of SoCal Gas and the Yorba Linda Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to thank you for watching. Just as a reminder to our television viewers and our audience here tonight, you can re-watch tonight's forum on YouTube, or you can find it on Spectrum Three, where it will be aired for the next consecutive three Wednesdays at 7:00 p.m. We hope you've enjoyed tonight's forum, and please don't forget to vote on November 5th. And we wish you a good night. Thank you.